Members of the public, I would like to say that as a committee we understand that the matters under consideration tonight can be emotive, but please can we ask that you be respectful of those around you and the committee and refrain from any comment. So now we move to the main items of business. The minutes of the meeting which took place on the 9th of March 2016 have been laid on the table for at least thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. And have there been any apologies for absence, Gary?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we've received apologies from councillor Band who also wanted me to advise the committee that had he been able to attend, he felt that he would have had to have declared a non-procurnary but prejudicial interest in the case of application A1 WA 2016 0148 because the applicants are well known to him. Apologies have also been received from councillors Jeanette Stenner and Stuart Stenner in respect of the same application, and had they been in attendance, they would have also had to have declared a procurnary interest in the item. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Gary. Have members declared any interest before the meeting?
Yes, Chairman. We have received a committee-wide declaration of non-procurnary interest, this is for all members of the committee, in relation to item B1 WA 2016 002, as the applicant is a Waverley Borough councillor, and any members obviously who wish to declare a procurnary interest may do so at this point. We have also received a declaration of non-procurnary interest from councillor Michael Goodrich in relation to item A1 WA 2016 0148, as he knows the applicant. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Goodrich?
To clarify that, I have declared a non-procurnary personal interest in that my wife and I are members, ordinary members, of the Shamley Green Gardening Club, which is the context that we know the applicant.
Thank you very much. Sorry, councillor Seaborn, speak your pardon, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I also need to declare a non-procurnary interest in item B2, in that I sat on the Bramley Parish Council Planning Committee that reviewed that particular application and raised no objection.
Do you mean B1, councillor Seaborn?
Pardon, yes, yes, B1. Chestnut Cottage.
Thank you. All done. And so have there been any questions received from members of the public, Gary?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you. Now we move on to the quarterly appeals report, which Catherine will be presenting. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Chairman. The appeals for this quarter are reported on pages five to twelve of your agenda papers. A total of four appeal decisions were received between January and March. Out of the four appeal decisions, two were dismissed and two were allowed. I shall take you through the first three decisions before handing over to Peter, who will talk to you about the fourth decision. The first decision on page five relates to the erection of a single dwelling at Wildacre Bookhurst Lane in Cranley. This was a delegated refusal and the appeal was allowed. The main issues were the effect on the character of the area and whether the proposal would harm living conditions for future and existing residents. The inspector concluded that whilst the site lies in the open countryside, it is relatively self-contained, is not immediately visible on Bookhurst Road, and is surrounded on three sides by residential development, and on that basis would not adversely affect the semi-rural character of the area or the urban-to-rural transition at that point. Although in outline form, the inspector was satisfied that the indicative dwelling could have been accommodated on the site without detriment to the character and appearance of the area. The inspector went on to consider the living conditions of neighbouring properties and found that any overlooking to neighbours would be no greater than that from the existing host dwelling which exists on the site. Similarly, with works proposed to remodel the existing dwelling on site and alter its internal layout, the inspector was satisfied that the relationship between the existing dwelling and that which was proposed would be acceptable. Finally, the inspector concluded that the amenity space provided for future residents would be appropriate and would provide a good standard of amenity, and on that basis he allowed the appeal. The second appeal relates to the erection of a building to provide twenty-five retirement apartments at forty-nine, fifty-one and fifty-three Horsham Road. This was a delegated refusal and, following an informal hearing, was dismissed by the inspector. The main issues again were the character and appearance of the area and the effect on living conditions of neighbouring residents. With regards to the first point, the inspector considered that the bulk and mass of the building would be substantially greater than that of surrounding properties, with a substantial rearward projection into the site. This would be materially harmful by reason of the bulk and mass of the building and its coverage of the site. In addition, the inspector concluded that the proposed building would result in side-facing windows which would project beyond the existing rear elevations of existing properties, which would thus directly overlook the private amenity spaces of adjoining residential properties. In this respect, the inspector found the application unacceptable and the proposal was therefore dismissed. The third appeal related to an application for a new dwelling at White Rose Cottage in Elmbridge Road, Cranley. Again, this was a delegated refusal and was dismissed by the inspector. The main considerations were the impact on the character of the area and the appearance of the countryside, and whether the development was in a sustainable location. The inspector took the view that whilst the standalone design of the development was acceptable and would not be out of keeping with surrounding plots, this in itself did not outweigh the conflict with local plan policy C2, which seeks to protect the countryside from development. It would result in an isolated dwelling and would not amount to sustainable development, and the appeal was dismissed on that basis. As I said at the start, I shall now hand you over to Peter, who will take you through the fourth decision, which relates to the Barclay site in Cranley. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'll just pick up on this application. So it's, it was an application for four hundred and twenty-five new dwellings on land to the south of the High Street in Cranley and between Allfold Road and Noel Lane. Yes, as I say, the development comprised of four hundred and twenty-five dwellings, and it was an outline application seeking approval of, in detail, of the access. Access was provided to both Noel Lane and Allfold Road. This application was considered by the Joint Planning Committee and was refused by the council, and was allowed, allowed at appeal, and we received the appeal at the end of the thirty-first of March. So the key issues or matters raised were the effect of the proposed development would have on the character and appearance of the area, its impact upon ancient woodland, flooding implications of the proposal, and overall, in light of the conclusions on those matters, whether any adverse impacts arising from the development would significantly outweigh any benefits. So I'll just pick up on the first points on policy. So on page nine of your agenda, we've got the start of the summary, so it talks about local plan policy C2, which is our protection of our countryside beyond the green belt. The inspector in considering the appeal considered this to be out of date as a policy and its underlying aim to protect parts of the borough that are not in the green belt, because it wasn't consistent with the emphasis of the MPPF or the principle of the MPPF in recognising the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside. So it confirms our position where we are on policy C2 in that decision. In terms of the harm to the landscape character, the development of four hundred homes would result in a notable change, of course, to what was, is an open greenfield. However, the inspector concluded that the visual impact would be largely contained within the boundary of the site, and the long-range views of Surrey Hills, A and B, and the Noel Parkland, which sits to the south, would not be altered. In terms of the loss of ancient woodland, little weight was placed on our policies, policies C7 and D7 of the local plan, as they fail to specifically identify ancient woodland in the policy, and they do not allow for the balancing act as required by paragraph one-one-eight of the MPPF in considering loss or harm to ancient woodland. The inspector confirmed that the harm should, should be shown to be avoided for mitigation considered, and that is the argument advanced by the council. However, what the inspector concluded, that loss of ancient woodland was a finely judged, a finely balanced matter, but neither the mitigation nor the compensation would cancel out the harm, therefore it was a matter to be weighed in the overall assessment and conclusions of the application. I'll come back to that point in the overall summing up. In terms of flood risk, there was concerns about, these weren't necessarily within the council's reasons for refusal, but there were matters raised by third parties and the parish council. In terms of the flood risk sequential test, considering more favourable sites or less favourable sites and flood zones, the sequential test was considered to be robust by the inspector, and due to him, and it was no better or no worse place than other sites within this study area, which we considered Cranley to be appropriate. In terms of access and egress, that was another concern that was raised, which members will, on the committee will have considered. We didn't pursue it again, but it was another matter raised by third parties, and due to drainage improvements and appropriate access, the inspector was satisfied that access and egress, safe access and egress could be provided. There's a point regarding foul drainage, and there is concern locally about the suitability of the sewage treatment plant. The inspector was clear that it was for the statutory authorities to address this issue, it wasn't for the applicant to, to pick up on that, and that they had to provide appropriate drainage for the development site. So that was a clear statement from the inspector, which is important to note. In summing up, the inspector considered the appeal site represents an attractive, or represented attractive option environmentally and in sustainability terms. The delivery of market and affordable housing would be a significant social benefit, and economic gains were also a social benefit when considered against what the MPPF advises us. And overall, they considered the benefits of the scheme would significantly outweigh the harm identified, and in that regard, loss of ancient woodland was accepted, and the exception test in terms of flood risk was also accepted. So ultimately, the inspector came to the conclusion that provision of housing in the manner formed and, and the evidence submitted, it was a sustainable development and acceptable in balance. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Now, we come to the quarterly enforcement report, so if, Victoria, thank you very much. Oh, hello, Beth. Welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. So the purpose of this report is to provide members with a report on the progress of the council's planning enforcement service for the quarter January to March of this year. So if I could take you directly to page fifteen, where the eastern area site-specific updates start, you'll note that on the second item, we undertook to provide a verbal update. We have discussed with the landowner the removal of all remaining buildings on the land, and they have confirmed that they are removing them, and this will be completed by the end of the week, and after that point, officers will visit the site again, but we are hopeful that this, the next set of quarterly updates will state that the matter can now be removed from this list. Then if I go straight then to page eighteen, and the table at the bottom of page eighteen, you'll note that our cases on hand figure continues to decrease, which is excellent news. In fact, our cases on hand at the end of today was actually a hundred and sixty-five. As with any tackling of backlog, this, it will, it will have an effect on our ability to meet our performance indicator, and you'll see that is evidenced on page nineteen. We dipped below the seventy-five percent, but you'll note that as an overall performance for the financial year, we were sat comfortably above that at eighty-two percent. Then turning to page twenty-one, you'll note that an enforcement appeal has been lodged, and that was about for a notice alleging the change of use of land to the stationing of mobile, mobile home and touring caravan for residential purposes and other operational That concludes my update, Chairman. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Are there any questions? Councillor Goodrich?
Not sure if I missed it on Polingfold Place, but it says in thick type, officers are liaising closely with the council's legal services department. It would be quite helpful to know how long that's been going on and when, when was the last site visit. Just to give it, I may be wrong, but I think that's what we were told last time. And how long does liaison with the legal services take?
Thank you, Chairman. Officers last visited last month the site. We are, we had to be very careful with what we can put in this report. Obviously, if you, if you would like a more detailed update, I can certainly arrange for one to be sent to you, but please rest assured that this matter is receiving, is receiving the highest possible attention. Thank you.
Councillor Danis?
Thank you. If I can just really add to those last comments, myself and my colleague councillor Henry, we, we are aware of what is happening, and I think the level of attention this is being given is appropriate, and I think that's probably the best place to leave it. We are keeping an eye on it, and I'm sure at the right time a full update will be given at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions on enforcement? So now we need to know, Peter, are there any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation that we should be aware of?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I have two matters to update you on. The first relates to the custom build and self-build housing register regulations 2016. What these regulations require, it requires the council to hold a self-build and custom build house building register and to have to regard to this register in their planning, housing, land disposal and regeneration functions. The council already holds this register, and it is available. At the moment, there's only a small number of individuals registered on it at this time. The council is, as a result of this, the council is required, in meeting its housing need, to take account of this demand, and any provision to meet demand would, would be a material consideration in favour of any scheme which proposes such units, as the same as we consider in general housing need. Whilst no scheme to be considered this evening proposed either custom or self-build units, any future applications must take into account our need. The second point to update you on is permitted development changes. In May 2013, a number of temporary permitted development rights were introduced, which allowed a number of developments to take place without the need for planning permission. These have now been made permanent by way of an amendment to the consolidated 2015 general permitted development order. The first one is relating to conversion of an office to residential. This temporary allowance was made permanent on the sixth of April this year, subject to a new condition allowing planning authorities to consider impact of noise from commercial premises on intended occupiers of the development, and the change will have to take, and the change of use sought will have to take place within three years. The second, or permanent, update is conversion of a laundrette to a residential property, and this will be subject to a prior approval process, which will allow councils to assess the impact of the changes on adequate provision of such services. Further amendments are proposed to come into force next year regarding conversion of light industrial units to residential dwellings. However, this is due in late 2017, therefore an appropriate update regarding the conditions of this will be provided at a later stage. Happy to take any questions on those. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Foratchewski?
Thank you, Chairman. With regard to the south build in this new legislation, one of the applications that came before us quite some time ago, which was the first of the release of the greenfields, Amlet's Lane, which is now in the ownership of Carla Homes, who are not the original applicant, they did in the outline application have an allocation for south build. I believe that has been removed. How does that affect the register? Or how, because I've had people actually contacting me saying, I want to go down the road to south build on the estate where Carla Homes intend to build, but they're saying it's no longer in their application. So if you could just enlighten me, as I can give then a response to the person who sent me the request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Thank you for that question. In terms of the specific application, as far as we're concerned, the legal agreement in relation to that application secures the provision of self-build. That hasn't been amended. As far as I'm aware, we haven't got an application to amend it at this time. I know there is an indication to do so, but at this moment, that current scheme and the legal agreement secures the provision of self-build on the site. If they were to come forward and suggest that be amended to another form, we would have to consider that as part of an application. So hopefully that answers the point. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Well, I must say, I'm quite relieved to hear about the laundrette to residential, because I thought I was already living in a laundrette, and in fact, with the amount of washing I have, but now I'm obviously living within the law. So now, in the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the sixteenth of May at a time to be agreed. So now we move on to the planning applications, and the planning application, item A1 WA 2016 0148, Apple Trees, Stonards Brow, Shamley Green, GU5 OUY. Jo, please, thank you.
This application relates to the provision of a new detached dwelling on this site here in Stonards Brow. It's a chalet-style property on land to the west of Apple Trees, which is this property here, and it's, which is, which itself is a two-storey property located, I'd say, on the southern side of Stonards Brow. The site is within an existing residential area and backs onto the car park of Longacre School. The car park is actually all to the rear, the school is, is down in this location, and this is currently car parking for the school. The proposed new dwelling would be served by a new access down through here, to provide a new access drive, and parking provision will be available for three cars. Parking is shown here, but obviously also on the drive. The proposed dwelling would provide a three-bedroom unit, although it's noted that there is a fourth bedroom stroke study at the first floor. The proposed property would have a depth of fourteen point four metres and a width of eight point two metres, and a ridge height of six point two. And it would be located three metres from the boundary with the property Sycamores, which is, this is the rear elevation, so the boundary with Sycamores is here, the boundary with Apple Trees is on this side, and on this side, you've got the proposed drive for the new, new dwelling, you've got an existing drive for the existing property, and then you've got Apple Trees located to the side. Just quickly looking at the proposed ground floor, it's got a sort of kitchen living area. There is a ground floor bedroom with a, with a bathroom, and then at first floor, as I say, you've got a further two bedrooms. This is indicated to be a study, but arguably it could also be used as a bedroom. Members will recall from the site visit that the site is surrounded by existing properties which vary in size and story heights. Apple Trees, as I've said previously, is a two-storey property. Sycamores is a bungalow, which is set on elevated land set up from the road. Properties on the opposite side are generally two-story and are set at a lower level than the adjacent roadway. Moving to the determining issues, the site is within the green belt, but also within the defined rural settlement area of Shamley Green. Whilst the construction of new buildings in the green belt may be inappropriate development, limited infilling of villages may not constitute inappropriate development. The proposed development would provide for an additional market dwelling, which would contribute, albeit in a very small way, to the housing needs of the borough. This is a material consideration to be weighed up against the other considerations of the application, and in particular, the visual amenities of the area and the impact on residential amenities of existing occupiers. In your officer's view, the proposed development will make good and efficient use of a parcel of land within an existing residential area, and would not cause material harm to the visual amenities of the area or the residential amenities of existing occupiers. This is nevertheless a matter of judgment. Turning to the update sheet, members will see that the county rights of way officer has now responded, raising no objections or comments to the proposed development and the impact on the adjacent bridleway which runs along Stonards Brow. Furthermore, in response to concerns raised by local residents, the comments of which are also referenced on the update sheet, the highway authority has provided a detailed response and justification for the views expressed. Whilst noting the views of the highway authority in relation to the necessity of the widening works to the lane, the proposed works nevertheless form part of the application that's been submitted, and in the absence of any highway safety objection or a visual amenity objection to the proposed works, it would not be appropriate to refuse planning permission on the basis of the proposed widening works. Members will also note that the update sheet refers to additional comments from the applicant, which includes confirmation that the land along the southern boundary of the site, and if I just take you back to the block plan, sorry, it's probably easier on that plan, to the southern, so a small parcel of land to the south of the end of the property. It's, we've sought confirmation from the applicant as to when this was purchased, because it did belong at some point in time to Long Acres, and was, has obviously been subsumed into this property, and I believe also into adjacent properties. But the confirmation has come that this was purchased from the school in 2004, so the change of use of land from, associated with the school to a residential curtilage would therefore appear to officers to be lawful by virtue of time. In view of the above, it's recommended that the application is granted, subject to conditions one to six, and informative one to eleven as set out in the report. If members could please note that this is a slight change in the recommendation wording as set out on the update sheet, which indicates that subject to conditions, permission be granted, it should be the other way around, permission is granted, subject to conditions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Jo. And so this is a public speaking item. I believe the process has been explained, and may I invite the opponent, Sue Llewellyn, to speak? Good evening, Mrs. Llewellyn.
Good evening, Chairman and councillors. Is this clear? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Sorry, just checking, you can hear.
You have four minutes from when you begin speaking.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and councillors. Eleven objections from nine properties is a significant number for one domestic application. It's the belief of everyone who's taken time to object, that it's clearly not appropriate development for this piece of land, and that the objections, when taken on aggregate and holistically, far outweigh the benefits put forward by the applicant, especially the comment, "to provide a home suitable for advancing years, that's totally irrelevant." The planning officers have failed to engage with anyone with a contrary view to the applicant, and furthermore, only three working days' notice was given of this meeting. There are material errors in the drawings which could mislead. The space for the lift is not even big enough for the car. There are unrealistic elevations, the parking space at the rear of the house would be partly on the patio. It's clear that the parking proposal is in part on green belt, out with the rural settlement boundary, so should not be approved. The report recognises the small amenity space and appears to encourage parking of more than two vehicles in tandem to the side of the dwelling, which is contrary to parking policy. The planning officer acknowledges and accepts many of the objections, but then dismisses them all individually. The village design statement is recognised within the report, but is dismissed as out of date, it's a current valid working document. There are definitely no special circumstances here, and the development would clearly detract from the openness and visual amenity of the area. This application is therefore contrary to the national planning policy framework and should not be permitted. The proposal contradicts RD1, as it will comprise infilling of a small gap and create the beginnings of a continuous built-up frontage, nor is it well-related in scale and location to the existing development. A, the proposed dwelling is not situated in an otherwise continuous built-up frontage. B, it does result in overdevelopment, this would be the third new dwelling to be built in Apple Trees Garden. C, it will adversely affect the urban rural transition. C) It will adversely affect the urban rural transition between Stonards Brow and the bridleway of Lord's Hill Common. It does not, sorry, D) does not take account of the setting and heritage of the settlement. All bar three of the properties in the vicinity are Victorian or older. E) The increase in traffic and widening of the bridleway will further reduce safety. The planning officer fails to address the loss of privacy objections, and further states that there are no human rights issues. This isn't true. Waverley Borough Council has an obligation to ensure that our rights to peaceful enjoyment of our possessions is upheld. Article 8 of the Human Rights Act states that a person has a substantive right to respect for privacy and a private life. The privacy for Sycamore and Earlsfield cottages would be seriously impacted by the proposal due to the close proximity combined with higher ground level. There is a legal right to light in all rooms, including en suite bathrooms. Light could be reduced to endurious levels by this proposal. Substantive legal and technical advice has been taken. This application breaches both national planning guidance and Waverley Borough Council policies, as well as planning law and recent judicial decisions. The planning officer's desire to add one dwelling to Waverley Borough Council's housing supply is but one material planning consideration, and it's clear to any reasonable rational person that this consideration does not outweigh the myriad of other critical MPCs, which when examined as a whole should support the outright rejection of the application. Indeed, it's deeply concerning that the planning officer concludes, contrary to planning rules and policies, that would approve in some small way, that would in some small way contribute to the housing needs of the borough. It's also of deep concern that Waverley Borough Council simply dismiss our legitimate objections premised in law and policy, and the important views of Warrish Parish Council. This is an inappropriate development application for a residential greenfield garden in the village of Shamley Green, and the government policy on Green Belt should be respected and adhered to. We urge the committee to reject the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Llewellyn. And now may I invite councillor Chris Crouch of Warrish Parish Council to speak.
Thank you, and good evening.
Mr. Crouch, I just need to make sure you understand that from the moment you start speaking, you have four minutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Warrish Parish Council would like to provide the committee with its principal views as to why it objects to the proposal. I have had the opportunity to read the very comprehensive report from the case officer. However, Warrish Parish Council believes that some of the case officer's judgements and conclusions are not justified. In our view, the proposal does not satisfy the detailed criteria of policy RD1. The case officer states that the site is substantially surrounded by existing development. We disagree. The open Long Acre playing fields and car park are to the south, and the houses on the south side of Stonards Brow are well-spread and do not surround the plot. In addition, the case officer does not address paragraph B of policy RD1, which seeks to protect the openness of the land. In our view, it is this openness, also referred to in paragraph C, which should be protected. The village design statement makes some key points concerning openness. New developments should preserve rural views and the feeling of space that are key characteristics of the parish. They should be placed sensitively on plots to maintain space from adjacent buildings. They should seek to retain open views of surrounding countryside and immediate local views. They should be appropriate in scale and balance, in the context of the area and immediate neighbours. In our view, this proposal does not meet these key guidelines. The case officer does refer in a number of places to the surrounding dwellings on the northern side of Stonards Brow. With respect, such references entirely miss the point that the proposal should be judged in the context of the southern side of Stonards Brow, which is both spacious and open. In conclusion, I would like to pick up on the point made in the village design statement and referred to by the case officer, that within Shamley Green, plot subdivision and infilling have increased dwelling density to a point where there are few potential development locations within the village envelope. This proposal is not such a development location. Indeed, it would be ironic to grant permission for this proposed plot subdivision, which is contrary to the village design statement and its implied criticism of such developments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Crouch. Now may I invite the supporter, Anthony Hodgson, to speak. Good evening, Mr. Hodgson. You have four minutes from when you begin to speak.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, Borough Council's planning officers, my name is Tony Hodgson, I am the applicant. I will not elaborate on issues which have already been well documented, because Waverley Borough Council planning officers have covered these in their detailed document posted on the Waverley Borough Council Committee last Friday, when they recommended this application for approval. Surrey County Council highways also support the proposal, on the grounds that it satisfies all planning and safety issues. I understand they have recently endorsed the proposal, whether the road is widened or not. Since 2013, I have sought three separate pre-planning applications. I appreciate the advice I was given, and I'm confident I have adopted the suggestions made by the planning officers without prejudice. I commissioned a topographical survey to determine the gentle slope of Apple Trees Garden, the road gradient, verge, and the gutter and ridge heights of adjacent properties. This survey was important in arriving at a design to minimise the impact on adjacent properties. The axis of the proposed dwelling is north-west-southeast. The sunrise is behind Long Acre School and sinks over Sycamore. At no point given the trajectory of the sun would it cast a shadow over neighbouring properties. Likewise, because it is set eight metres from the road, it was determined, even with a low winter sun, shadow will not be cast further than the roadway in front, a considerable improvement on the shadow cast by the existing laylandy hedge. As eighteen metres separate the proposed dwelling and Earlsfield Cottage's opposite, overlooking is not a problem. It isn't any different to all the other houses. Only guest bedrooms face the properties across the road, and because of the en suite facilities in those rooms, it's unlikely to be changed into living rooms in the foreseeable future. Ground floor windows facing the neighbouring property of Sycamore are no higher than the new fence height. The only window in Sycamore facing the proposed dwelling is a small frosted bathroom window. The first floor dormer window in the proposed dwelling has a high-level opaque glass window. The dwelling extends no further to the rear than the permitted 45-degree sightline, measured from the nearest Sycamore window on the same elevation. Impact to the sky view has been minimised, because the roof line is hit at the rear and is seven metres away from that property. It should not be an overbearing bulk. Long Acre School, whose cars exit Lord's Hill and Stonards Brow, have measured over 400 traffic movements daily during term time. The extra car movements generated from the new dwelling would have no significant impact. The proposed dwelling benefits from exceptional sightlines in both directions when exiting the dwelling. Adequate turning space has been provided to facilitate exiting in a forward direction. I understand there is a natural reluctance for change, but long term, this well-proportioned chalet-style bungalow gives the opportunity to improve the appearance of this oppressive section of road, and I believe sits well in the street scene and the block plan. It is not considered a cramped infill of the plot, it would not be out of keeping with other comparatively modern properties in this area, namely Sycamore, Meads, and Whitegate. My wife and I are proud of our village and have lived in it for 27 years, and have no desire to harm the environment. The planning officers in their document insist that the hard and soft landscaping be approved by them as one of the many conditions of granting permission, keeping a strong control over the proposed construction and finished dwelling. We accept all these conditions, and therefore respectfully ask you to endorse our application.
I must ask you to conclude now, please, Mr. Hodgson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, over to you. Councillor Goodrich.
Someone's got to start. Can I say firstly how helpful it was, I think, to have a site visit, because we could see how the plot related to Sycamore, how it related to Apple Trees, how it related to the properties on the other side of the road, and also the school. And I fully appreciate too, the comments, and I fully read all the comments made by the objectors, and take those all into account. I think from, and I also appreciate what the parish council says, and I always take careful note of what the parish council feel. The situation with this site is, of course, if you looked at it from the road now, you wouldn't even know there was a plot there, because of the high boundary screening that exists currently. And therefore, I'm slightly mystified when comments are made that the views are going to be changing and being filled in, when at the moment, from Stonards Brow, there's no view anywhere in that direction, and I suspect from the school's point of view, from the school's end, there's no open vista either. I mean, I also note that Sycamore is built on a very wide plot from the boundaries both sides, I mean, they fill in the street scene very fully, and if one goes down, as you look at that plan, down the road to the right, there is a, the next property is, gives the impression of being three-storey because of its garage being sunken and then two floors above it, and they're all very much, you know, close together there. Having looked at the plot, and it being a crying shame that an excellently-kept garden will have a dwelling written on it instead, it does seem to me that the plot has adequate space to, without a cramped look to it, to be able to put a bungalow on it. It seems to me that we have more, in other places, there's far less space between dwellings. In this case, the distance between Sycamore and the new dwelling is quite generous in amount, and points have been made already about the elevations and overlooking, and the overall height, and I think, you know, looking at the overall height of the dwellings, it doesn't seem to me not to fit in. I think the landscaping will be important, particularly the landscaping on the front, so that one can retain as much of the screening that's there at the moment, but recognising that some of the land iron, everything else, has got to come down, because they're pretty antisocial anyway. So on balance, at the moment, I am minded to go along with the officer's recommendations, but I will obviously listen to fellow councillors, but I did feel the site with it was useful, so that one could visualise how it all fit in. And we should be reminded that the Highway Authority are happy with it, therefore, any suggestions that we should refuse it on highway grounds would not hold water, and I do feel that if we should refuse it, I have a pretty sneaky suspicion what would happen on appeal. So at the moment, I am minded to support the officer's recommendations. Thank you, Ben Chalm.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. I must admit that I found the site visit extremely helpful as well, to put everything into context. Councillor Byham.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, councillor Goodrich has put a lot of meat on the bone to what we, any of us would wish to say, perhaps. I was surprised when I arrived at the site, and I did enjoy the site visit very much, to remember, realise that I'd actually visited the site before, as part of a Bramley Four Villages day cent to visit, to the gardens, which are superb. In another day, perhaps, we might want to list the gardens, because they are so superb, but nevertheless, we have an application to place a dwelling on it, and it clearly, in my view, fits in, both with the street scene and sufficient space on that plot. If we look at, if we could look at the plan view of the area, we have there Sycamore showing with a detached garage. Looking at the street scene drawing that we were looking at before, that clearly would appear to be gone, and that Sycamore has been widened considerably to fill the whole space of what basically is a double plot. And built right up to, or nearly up to, the boundary of the, what is now the garden, so ensuring that anybody who wants to develop this site, as it's being proposed, has to, and has extended well beyond what would be a normal requirement, and giving a three-metre gap to allow for privacy and to control any other problems. Overall, I'm satisfied that it's a reasonable application and the right thing to do. I do understand the problems and people concerned about traffic movements, but when you have a school immediately behind this particular plot, where Stonards Brow, as far as I understand, is part of a transport route for parents coming in and out, so I believe this is on the way out of the school grounds, up there and well-used, for a limited period during the day, and one extra dwelling and the traffic movements that that's likely to generate are, I reckon, consider insignificant. So overall, I recognise the concerns of both the parish and the residents, but I think that it's a reasonable application which I am willing to support.
Thank you, councillor Byham. Are there any more comments or observations? So the recommendation is that, subject to conditions 1 to 16 and informatives 1 to 11, as set out on the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please?
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, unanimous.
Sorry, the recommendation to grant is agreed. I wouldn't go out for a minute if I were you, I'd sit there for a second. Thank you. So now we move on to the non-speaking item, item B1, WA20160022, Chestnut Cottage, 49 Chestnut Way, Bramley, GU5OJE. Tim, would you like to introduce the application to us, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Members, the application outlined here in red, the site measures 0.06 hectares and forms currently part of the garden to 49 Chestnut Way, which is outlined here in blue. The site has a general sloping gradient rising from north-east to south-west. The site has grass surface with a mixture of hedging and tree cover to the boundaries. The site surroundings consist predominantly of other residential plots and open fields on the opposite side of the road. The proposal itself is for the direction of a pair of semi-detached dwellings with access, new access off Bertley Road. Proposed dwellings, outlined here in grey, would be positioned would be positioned set back within the site with a shared turning area in front and also parking. Each dwelling would have allocated three parking spaces, here and here, and private rear garden space. In terms of the new access proposed, it would be a brand-new access onto the road. The proposal also includes the provision of a pedestrian link to an existing pedestrian path, which is here, to be controlled via condition. This plan, just a wider view really of the proposed block plan, but what it shows you is the extent of highway-owned land. And what this shows is that the visibility displays to be provided can be accommodated on highway and applicants' land. The visibility is to be conditioned within the recommendation. In terms of the proposed dwellings themselves, this is the proposed front elevation of the two. You'll note, I mentioned earlier, about the site rising gradient from the road up to the existing property. Hence, the proposal would require raised access to the front of each dwelling. The materials would be exposed facing brick and slate roof tiles. And on the back, single dorma windows for each, but again, symmetrical appearance to both. Looking from the side elevation, this is the rear elevation here of the dorma and the front here, really just to help you show the extent of the rising gradient coming up. And again, the other side of the property. In terms of the floor plans, each dwelling would mirror each other. So, ground floor, you'd have kitchen, dining, living room. First floor would be three bedrooms, and a small bedroom in the roof. And here is the roof plan. This is the proposed street scene drawing submitted with the application. It's worth note that the site is on lower ground to some of the surrounding residential properties. The nearest residential properties to the site are on the right-hand side here. These are set back and up from Bertley Road. Really just to provide you with the indication of the height of the proposed dwellings and how they would sit within the street scene. Just for members, through some site photographs. This is taken really from just off the road. You'll note here the existing rear elevation of number forty-nine. And so the plot is here. And this is from within the plot itself, looking back towards where the main road is behind this hedge and tree line here. View from across the main road, so the axis proposed would be through here. There's some other existing resident properties in the road. Really just a clearer one to show you the design of another of the houses on Bertley Road. These properties are immediate neighbouring properties to the south-east of the site. These are quite newly constructed, more contemporary design, but they are set back from the road. And again, beyond these, just to give you an idea, some other more traditional-looking properties. Members will note that the application site is adjacent to trees covered by a blanket tree preservation order. The sighting and design of dwellings has taken account on and off-site trees. One particular tree has been identified as a constraint, which is this tree here, a poplar tree. The scheme has accounted for this in terms of the sighting of the dwellings and the types of foundation design proposed. Further details of this is outlined in the impact on trees section of the committee report. However, for members, I just want to show the photograph of the tree in question. In terms of determining issues with this application, the site is within the rural settlement of Bramley. Taking into account the position of the site and surroundings of other residential properties, the principal residential development is considered acceptable. It is therefore considered that the proposal is an acceptable form of development within the greenbelt. In terms of visual impact and design, the character of the area is predominantly residential. Officers are satisfied that the proposed form and design of the dwellings would add to the residential character of the area. Proposed dwellings would be sited on lower ground than neighbouring properties, and officers are satisfied that no material harm would be caused to neighbouring amenities. The impact on trees, as I outlined earlier, the site lies adjacent to trees covered by a tree preservation order. The loss and likely effect on trees is therefore a matter of judgement and assessment in this application. I want to turn members' attention now to the update sheet. Members will note that we've added a new location plan within the committee report, just to make it clearer. And also, an amendment to page seventy-three. In the highway section, the application site is actually within forty mile hour zone and not thirty. And in terms of the trees, we have had some additional conditions recommended by the tree officer, which are there for you there, numbers twelve to sixteen. So therefore, Chairman, the revised recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to eleven and informatives one to nine set out in the report, plus additional conditions twelve to sixteen in the update sheet, permission be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Members. Councillor Seeburn.
Thank you, Chairman. Let me start by thanking Tim for a clear and thorough assessment. So, members may have noted that under relevant planning, recent relevant planning history, this site was the subject of two applications in 2015, both of which were withdrawn. Local concerns were raised that these two alternative applications for either two four-bedroom houses or three three-bedroom houses constituted overdevelopment of a limited plot. The current application has attempted to address these concerns, and in my view, I think it's been successful. In relation to MPPF thirty-two, traffic safety is a real issue at this location on the EA281. In fact, it is just about everywhere in Bramley on the 281. But visibility is not good due to elevation changes, curvature of the road, and motors being distracted by a change in the speed limit from forty to thirty. However, the plans provide adequate parking, provision for vehicles to drive in and drive out in forward gear, and visibility requirements have been assessed and deemed adequate. The parish council retains a long-held belief that the point of speed limit change should be moved further south, and that safe access and egress to this site and adjacent properties would be significantly improved if the speed limit on the 281 were thirty miles an hour at this point. However, I don't think that's actually relevant to this application. It was just something that the parish council brought up in their comments. What I would encourage officers to do, if members are minded to support this, is that condition five is ensured that it's tightly enforced. And this is based on numerous breaches of the equivalent requirement during the construction of the adjacent For House Bronley Woods development behind and to the south of the site. Neighbours there would cause considerable disruption by inconsiderate parking during the construction. So, you know, we've made provision for managing that. I just encourage officers to make sure that it is tightly enforced, because it did cause a lot of concern during that construction. Beyond that, I support the recommendation to approve this application. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Seeburn. Councillor Byham.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes. The first comment I'd like to make is about the tree preservation orders. I'm surprised that we talk about a blanket tree preservation order when I was told about two or three years ago that they were no longer appropriate at all out. So, how did this happen on this particular site? I know that you're obviously protecting in terms of the four properties that we've replaced one, but that just surprises me. But nevertheless, it's there, and therefore we obviously abide by it, and that is a good thing anyway in terms of protection of trees. As councillor Seeburn's already said, the problems of speed limit change, I've been trying to address that for the last ten or twelve years in getting the, persuading the Highways Authority to move it further south to be appropriate because of the, it's all part of the village envelope, and therefore the speed ought to be reduced. But that's another matter which, but the inclusion of the footpath is an excellent requirement in that it will provide a footpath which is also available to the residents of the four new properties in Bronley Woods and the remaining other two or three properties adjacent to that. And they will have a way of walking down onto the main road and joining the footpath system without having, without too much danger. So, I approve of that and agree with it. The tree line along the side of the property between there and the Chestnut Way development, which some of them are still in council ownership, is oppressive at the moment. Indeed, the trees were topped in the last twelve or eighteen months, I think, to a great benefit of the residents of the Chestnut Way. They are flats and actually reduce their dampness. So, I think probably a better treatment of that area would be greatly appreciated, although they obviously are concerned about the oppressive nature of a building adjacent to them or fairly close to them. So, but overall, I think it's a good use of the site. Having put in applications which were too extensive to be acceptable, they now appear to be acceptable in the terms that they are printed. And they clearly have the support of the highways officers with regard to visibility displays and access. Anybody would try to reverse out of this site or anywhere else as a death wish. And having the turning circle or turning capability and driving out in forward gear is obviously very much required. And I presume would happen in all cases. So, I'm supportive of the application. Thank you.
Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I just wanted to pick up on one point. Thank you for those comments. Just regarding the recommended condition sixteen, which is on page six of your agenda. We just noted the wording and recent, relatively recent changes about pre-commencement conditions. Sorry, not of your agenda, of your committee update sheet. Apologies. So, the recommended condition sixteen, we're recommending, rather than that saying, "No development shall take place until", we're suggesting it should be prior to occupation a detailed landscaping scheme which has been submitted. And in addition to the reason, we remove the final sentence to say, "This matter goes to the heart of the permission", because it's a matter that doesn't need to come upfront, and it's a matter that we can arrange, sorry, a matter that we can arrange and deal with prior to occupation. It's appropriate just to amend that wording. So, if members are happy, we'd ask that that just be noted and that condition tweaks, just to reflect that position. But that's okay. Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, I didn't get what you said. I said prior to, you said prior to occupation, a detailed landscaping scheme. And what was the second point you made?
Under the reason, the last sentence which says, "This matter goes to the heart of the permission", we don't feel it needs to be that worded, so we can delete that short sentence at the end of the reason at the bottom of the page.
Right.
Is that okay?
Yes. So, we have to agree to that change. Do we have to go through the proposal and seconding, or do we just agree to it in general, or what? How do we deal with this? So, we can agree to it in general with a show of hands. Do we agree to the officer's suggestion? Agreed. Thank you. So, condition sixteen would have that one change at the beginning, and the reason will have that one change at the end. Yes? Good. Okay. Any more comments, questions or observations on this application? In which case, the recommendation is that, subject to conditions one to eleven with the changes, and informatives one to nine as set out in the report, plus additional conditions twelve to sixteen with the changes, I think, as set out on the update sheet, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
So, we have an abstention against?
Can we do that again? I obviously have missed a hand there.
Yes, Mr Hand, can we please, show of hands, please, those who agree?
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. That's unanimous. Thank you.
That's better. Thank you very much. Thank you, Gary. So, thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed. Now, there are no items to consider in exempt session, so that concludes this meeting. And it also concludes my role as chairman for planning. Thank you very much. I've enjoyed working with you. And I look forward to my next role in this council. Thank you.